So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of June 1st, 2017. We are going to start with a report out from our closed session.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the City Council had two items on the closed session tonight, and no action to report out on either of those at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda.
Just add, Madam Mayor, close in memory of David Friedenberg, who was Brisbane City Attorney from 1969 to 1976.
Okay. Thank you. And I have the obituary here. I'll read that when we do close. Thank you. Any other changes? Oh, I do have one note that the Item A presentations regarding the proposed recreational vehicle park, the speaker on that will not be available until 8:30, so I've been suggested that we move that down to after the public hearing.
Okay.
Any other changes?
Move adoption as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have an agenda. Oral communications, number one. So this is an opportunity to give public comment for items not on the agenda. I do have a few slips, and if you'd like to speak, you can give a slip to RCB Clerk. First up, we have, oh, these are on items on the agenda, some of them. So, let's see. These are all on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay. So we'll wait for the, until those hearing, those items come up, and you'll have an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see a hand. Thank you.
Hi.
Will you state your name for the record? You're welcome.
Hello, hello?
Michael Ross.
Michael Ross. Jimmy Leslie, Dreamstar Productions, here to talk about Star City Music Festival.
Move closer to the microphone, yeah? Oh, okay.
Yeah. There you go, Jimmy.
Jimmy Leslie and Michael Ross, here from Dreamstar Productions, to talk about the Star City Music Festival.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, that's what it is. The last time we were here, it was a matter of, what's this going to be? What road should we take? And it is built. It is called the Star City Music Festival. We've got a full day of amazing musicians that are coming. We've got food vendors lined up. We've got a bunch of sponsors. We've been hoofing it all around, both sides of the highway here. Everything from Alta Motors is going to bring their motorcycle on down, to sponsorships from the Doubletree, and from the new brewery down in South San Francisco, Forty Seven Hills, amongst others, have bought into this. And they're, we've put all the, all their names on that, so that you can sort of see the, the business buy-in. And as far as the acts that we've got, the few acts that we got at the top of the bill, Afrolicious, and Diego's Umbrella, and the Allman Brothers Clan, and Killer Whale, we feel fantastic about them. So we have absolutely built what we think is going to be the biggest and best music party that Brisbane has ever seen. And now, we really just wanted to tell you that, please, please just adopt this now as your own thing, and get everybody you know to come and understand that this has got, it's going to be a ticketed event, as we kind of discussed in budget proposals earlier, because we can't make any money for the San Bruno Mountain, or have any money on the back end of this thing if people don't buy tickets. But people in Brisbane are not used to paying for tickets to see shows in this park. So that seems to be one thing that we need to make sure everybody understands, is that this is a very special thing. It's not just another concert in the park. We need people to buy tickets. The website is builtstarcityfest.com, and we've got the Facebook page going. So if we could just get all hands on deck to pull on the rope the same direction, that's kind of what we're here to check in and say, we're looking for. Volunteers. It's also not too late to sponsor. And we also, we'll kick off the event with Brisbane's Got Talent winner. We're having Brisbane's Got Talent tomorrow night at the Mission Blue Center, and we've got seven, seven performers lined up to do that, and the winner of that will kick off the Star City Music Festival at noon. So, there you go. Star City Music Festival is happening. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity, and we hope we can really knock this one out for you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And can you remind us of the date?
July 8th.
Okay.
Remember, we had talked, originally, it was a matter of, do we do this on the 4th of July weekend, or the one after it? And we went with the one after it, and that does seem to be the way to go. Like, everybody's got plans on the 4th of July, and everybody, when you tell them, "It's July 8th," and you say, "It's the one after," they go, "Oh, great. I hadn't even thought about that, what I'm going to do that weekend."
Right. So, we're really looking forward to it. For the talent show tryouts tomorrow, if people haven't signed up, is it too late, or can they show up?
It's not, it's not too late to do it. All we really are asking is that they just drop a little 20, 30-second video on the Facebook page.
Okay.
And we see it, and everybody so far has had talent. We haven't had to tell anybody, "No, please don't come to our talent."
Can you give some, can you give some more information about that? What time it starts? Is it, does it cost money? What can they expect for tomorrow?
Okay, so, that's going to start at 6 o'clock, doors to the public. We're asking judges like Madison Davis and Cliff Lentz to, to arrive a little bit before that, maybe by 5 o'clock. We'll run through the production of it, which Mikey is handling, and he's also going to be the host. So this, uh, the doors are at 6:00. About 6:30, we should have a show. It should probably take about an hour, and we'll choose a winner. And there is no cost, so just tell everybody to come, and especially, we're hoping that the, the performers bring some family and friends to root them on.
Yeah, no, for sure. Staff, do we have, how are we promoting tomorrow night's event? Do we have, are we going to have something on the signboard, and?
It's already up.
Is it up? Is it up? Okay, cool. All right, great. There you go. That's awesome. All right.
And thank you all for Noreen. She's been fantastic to work with, and Ricardo as well. We've been going down to Parks and Rec every week, and meeting with those guys and checking in.
Yeah, I keep bumping into you guys, so, that's awesome.
That's really great.
And then, so the tickets, the tickets for the festival, they're only 15 bucks.
We're charging 15 bucks now, and we've, is the introductory price. And in terms of the roll, this rollout of this, it's sort of been, we didn't want, the idea was to sell sponsorships, and to, we didn't make a big print run and a big blast. That's really all sort of happening this week, once we finalize the conversations with all the sponsors. So, tickets are 15 bucks now, and I'm thinking that we should raise them to 20 bucks, maybe like, exactly a month in front of the festival, on, on June 8th, and then sort of create a window of urgency, basically, for people to buy them. That's where, and then we'll raise them to 20, but I think also, we can create, we could still create a local Brisbane code, or something like that, and give people five off, if you want to keep it local.
We're talking about doing a senior citizens fixed income ticket, a $5 ticket.
That's great, Mike. Yeah, no, absolutely. And then, you know, you talked about the nonprofits that are going to benefit from this. So if you just kind of talk about the nonprofits that are going to be at the music festival, our local nonprofit?
We have the meeting with the Mountain Watch on Monday night to finalize all that stuff.
Okay, cool. And then you've got the Lions Club, they're going to be fixing up, you know, the Polish, and the Hotlins, and, and, you know, the tri-tip. And then, what about the SPTO? What are they, what's their?
SPTO was not able to do this.
Oh, they're not going to do the, the, um, oh, okay. I considered that they were going to do, like, the playground thing.
We thought that, we thought they were too, but we're going to take over that.
All right.
If, if, if anybody knows anybody that wants to do that particular job, we kind of thought that that was going to work out, and then we had another angle on a teacher at Brisbane Elementary, but so far, none of the parents.
You might want to ask Silver Spot.
Asking for?
You might want to ask Silver Spot, or maybe the mom. Those would be, yeah, Mothers of Brisbane.
Or the mob.
Those would be two good, because those would probably be kids that would definitely be, that those ages would definitely be at the playground, so that, those might be two good groups to tap into.
Silver Spot, and the Mothers of Brisbane.
Yeah. Noreen can hook you up.
Doesn't hurt to just check.
Okay.
The mob, for short.
And kids do get in free. We definitely want the whole family to come down. And then, we also, we're going to buy some advertising for this, really sort of, starting next week, I'm looking at, at the Chronicle, and looking at, you know, the Mercury News, Jam Base, various things. If anybody has connections to good, somebody, your friend works at the Chronicle, or anything else like that, that we can, just think about the festival for a minute. If you have anybody that you think would be.
Nevis, he retired, so.
Yeah, Cliff has friends at the Chronicle.
You may, you, you may, Jimmy, Jimmy, you may want to reach out to Kevin Fryer, who has some connection with the NPR cheap entertainment of the weekend, so they'll do a list of, of upcoming events, and do you know of, can you read off some of your artists that you have lined up, and?
Do you like to know the artists that we have?
If you have, if you have some artists lined up, I think we'd like to announce it to the public.
Okay, so the artists are Afrolicious is the main headline and band. They just headlined the independent in San Francisco last Friday, and we went and got them all stoked up about this. Afrolicious is essentially a party on wheels. It's, it's a kind of a funk reggae kind of thing, that if you can't, if you can't dance to that, then you kind of can't dance to anything, really. And then, and then Diego's Umbrella is under that, and they're a gypsy rock band, so if you look at Diego's Umbrella online, and see their videos and stuff, they're amazingly crafted, and they have lots and lots of views, but it's essentially, it's a, like, an alternative rock band, but definitely with like, a gypsy flavor. And then, my Allman Brothers tribute band is playing, and I guess that, that picks up a new significance, as Greg Allman just passed away last weekend, so a lot of people have been noticing that name on there and talking about it. Killer Whale is independent psychedelic rock band from San Francisco that, we did our own sort of like, San Francisco's Got Talent meeting, in Mikey's office, and, and just listened to a bunch of bands that were listed as the hot, new, up-and-coming bands, and, and we settled on checking them out, and we thought they were great in the Mission, so that's kind of our indie, indie cred right there. And then Vanessa Silverman Band is, she's kind of like, if you took a singer-songwriter girl and crossed her with Kurt Cobain, or something, it's kind of like a punk rock singer-songwriter, would you say? Joan Jett, something like that? Yeah? And then Katie Girobaldi is, she's just got a beautiful voice, and plays guitar, she's like, a singer-songwriter. She's, she lives right around the corner, in South San Francisco, and she is the, she works for Guitar Player Magazine, as whenever we, like, I just do, if I could do a big story, she does the transcription of the interview, and gets it back to me, right? So, she's really, really talented, and, and very into promoting this. We have Jerry Cool and his band, The Side Effects. Most people around here nod their heads, because Jerry's kind of a local fixture, and everybody knows who he is, great guitar player, and singer. And then we're going to have an all-star jam at the end of the thing, where we kind of put as many of these people together, and play a bunch of sort of fun cover songs, and let it kind of in and out with, with various people, including real estate star Ron Davis on some drums. We have Pamela Parker, who's kind of a, just a classic San Francisco rock and roll girl, basically. Ashley Kepler's going to come down from Lake Tahoe, and she's just super sexy, and kind of a burlesquey kind of version of a rock singer. Jeff Taylor, who is going to come down and play some saxophone in that. And so that's pretty much all of the musical acts, as well as the winner of Brisbane's Got Talent. We open the talent show to any talent, like, it could have been a juggler, or an acrobat, but they were all musicians, so it's going to be a musical artist, and that'll be the first thing. We're going to start the day with a showcase in the skate park. We really wanted to make, draw some attention to that, and there's some guys.
I hired a professional skate team to come down and do tricks.
Great.
For the, for the kids. The idea, the idea was that, to get the kids down there first, around the skate park, we're going to set up a PA system, play music. These professional skateboarders are going to do the hard tricks that the kids are working on, and hopefully have some interaction with them. And then, after, as soon as the skate park event stops, the Alta Motors is going to bring their trick motorcycle-riding team right by the skate park, and lead everybody from the skate park into the festival. And so, and, and the Makers' Tent? All right, and for the, in the kids' area, we're going to set up a thing called the Makers' Tent, which is basically, of, the Phil, it's like, you're familiar with the Makers' philosophy? You know, "You can do it," is basically it. And in, yeah, we have meetings once a month, and that, where we all get together and show each other what we've made over the last month on a specific theme. I think the theme for this Makers' Tent is magnificent, and so in between the bands, while the bands are changing over, the Makers' Tent is going to come alive with the different songs that makers have created for this theme of this day in the park. And at one point, there's going to, they're going to do a thing called a ping song, where they're going to write a song with all the kids, as they say, "You write them to the next verse, then you write the next verse," and they're all professional musicians up there, they're going to help them write their song, to encourage them to become active in music. My philosophy on this was, that if they're not going to teach them art and music in school, then it's up to us to teach them. And, so that, then as soon as the Makers' Tent does their thing, then bands come back on. And, and I guess we have, we go down, we're just going down the list?
We're going down the list. Regarding the beer.
Oh, go ahead.
Regarding the beer, this was, this was something where we, we pretty much easily could have just reached out to Budweiser, or even something more local, Anchor Steam, and said, "Do you guys want to sponsor this, and sell it for a pretty good amount of money?" But the idea with this from the beginning was to be as local and community organizing as we could be, so unbelievably, I'm sitting in a nail salon, because I'm a classical-style guitar player, and this woman says, "Hey, are you looking for a beer sponsor for that?" You know, and I went, "Yes." And Forty Seven Hills Brewery has just opened up about 90 days ago, and it's the guy that was running Gordon Biersch, down by the ballpark. They lost their lease, so he took all those big vats and everything, and brought them down to South San Francisco, on, on South Linden Street, and it's, and he and his, his partner, by hand, built this big, awesome tasting room. So you can go down there on any given night, and, and basically, the after-work lunch pail crowd is, is in there, just, he's got these four different craft beers, and he's got these sausages that are fantastic. And so he is our beer sponsor, and they're sort of our South San Francisco promotional partner, trying to get those folks up.
I can attest that.
You've been there?
I went there with you!
Oh, you were there? Right, I was singing. I was singing you at the table.
So, yes.
I don't remember.
So, I went, and the beer is fantastic, and the, I met the owner, and, super-nice guy, so I'm.
It lives in Brisbane.
Yeah, I'm super excited that, um, that.
A lot of, a lot of what we were putting together, we, we had this thing we called the Brisbane Filter, which is that we would put, on every idea, we would put the Brisbane Filter around it, and say, "Can we make this happen in Brisbane?" If we couldn't make it happen in Brisbane, then we would go to South City and Daly City, and we'd, you'd have the circle that we had to, we're trying to make something that, that's based around this community, and, because we want to celebrate this area. There's plenty of celebration of that area right up, right up the road. And so, we really wanted to try to focus here, and so it was really a blessing that we got that beer sponsor, because we, I was holding off on it. I'm in, I, I run a bar up in the city, so I knew I could just always go to my Budweiser guy and be like, "All right, we'll do you," but I wanted this. And so this is the one I'm the most proud of down here, this corner.
And we don't have a wine sponsor at this point, so that's another thing. He gave me the.
You should have to reach out to Michelle.
Michelle? Okay, so that's who he said, John, said.
And Talia, Talia D.
Who's that?
Wine Landia.
Wine Landia. We have two wine vendors in town.
Okay, because we did reach out to Michelle a couple of times, and we just didn't get back, but if Wine Landia, that sounds great to us. We need to get a wine vendor.
And we'd like to encourage everybody to just spread the word as much as you can, you know? Let's, parties are great when people go to them.
Right? I had a recommend.
Awesome.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I was.
I was, I thought of like, a advertising recommendation. I haven't worked with them, but I used to use these resources all the time, and I was looking for cool, interesting things to do in the Bay Area, so you might want to check out sffuncheap.com. Yeah, Fun Cheap SF, and see.
Johnny Fun Cheap? I remember that guy, yeah.
I don't know, but you, you seem to know.
You went to the brewery with.
So, check, check that out, and see if they could get you posted on there. And then there's also a website called Upout, and Upout has memberships where people pay a certain amount per month, and then they get, like, discounted, they get to pick an event each month where they get discounted tickets to, but then they also have a whole user base that doesn't pay, that they also promote events in the Bay Area, so sometimes what they'll do is, let's say, like, you give them 20 free tickets, or 50 free tickets that they pass on to their subscribers, then in exchange, they'll do a lot of advertising and promoting a view on their website. So, that's a really good way to use your advertising money, because it's pretty much free to give tickets, and you're ensuring you're getting people who are coming, who might bring other people who are going to pay, and then in turn, they're helping you get other people who are going to pay to, off of their website. So that's a good place to connect with, so, Upout.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Right? Well, thanks for the, yep.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, you know, you think about all those bands you just mentioned, and at $15 a ticket, that's like, like a buck and a half a band, I mean.
It's, it's too cheap at the moment, you know?
It is way too cheap. But it's a good value.
We'll raise it. What we really need to do is just get everybody.
Get people, yeah.
Pay some ticket price this year, and, and then it'll, it'll snowball from there. That's really the way we're looking at it.
Once everybody can see value added to the community, I think it'd be, that's what, that, what we're trying to do right now, is just convince everybody that this is the thing they want to do on July the 8th.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, fellas. All right, keep it up, man.
Okay. Okay, so, we are, oh, is there anyone else in oral communications who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no hands. We will move on. We're going to skip over presentations and come back to that later. So now we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I just had one, one addition to one of the minutes, and it had to be with the, let's see, where was it? On, oh, it was on page four of the minutes of April 27th, and I just wanted to add in there that, under page four, you can put it, after Councilmember Davis, that Councilmember Conway went through the history of why we are where we are with the bus, and you can use whatever words you want, but.
Okay.
I always want that noted, because I'm going to say it every time. Same thing, over and over. This might be different.
Okay.
The words, same message.
And with that change, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. We have consent calendar approved. Okay. Okay, now we are at public hearing, Item A. Consider introduction of ordinance 617 to amend zoning text, Chapter 17.02, .06, .08, .10, .12, .16, .18, .19, and to add chap, new Chapter 17.33 to Title 17 zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code to define and regulate personal cultivation of medical cannabis by qualified patients and caregivers, and medical cannabis caregivers. Add new Chapter 8.20 to Title 8 Health and Safety to adopt performance standards for personal cultivation of medical cannabis. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As you indicated, this matter regarding the regulation of personal cultivation of medical cannabis, and regulation of medical cannabis businesses, was continued from your meeting in April of this year, and there were a couple particular items the council requested be directed, or be addressed as part of this updated report. So one of the issues at hand was the maximum cultivation area and number of plants that were being considered for personal cultivation of medical cannabis. And in the follow-up to that meeting, the police chief spoke with a representative from the San Mateo County Narcotics Task Force, indicated that approximately 25 cannabis plants could be cultivated within 100-square-foot area. So the text in the ordinance that you have in front of you reflects that maximum number, brought down from 50, which was in the original language. And it's a reminder that 25 plant maximum is based on having multiple cardholders or caregivers at a single residence. So that's where that maximum number would come into play. The other issue that the council wanted to address was the relationship of these proposed regulations with the Adult Use of Cannabis Act, which was approved by proposition last year. And that proposition changed state law regarding the personal cultivation, possession, consumption of non-medical cannabis products, as well as commercial cultivation, production, and sale. It did not alter the, the state proposition and regulations related to medical cannabis, so nothing in the, the Adult Use of Cannabis Act changed any of the medical provisions or requirements. And I'll just kind of touch on that in a little bit. So one of the important issues of the personal non-medical cannabis usage and the, and the proposition was it makes it legal for persons 21 years of age to smoke or ingest cannabis products, possess and purchase and transport such products, and to cultivate and process a limited number of plants. So, that's the, the use aspect. It's important to recognize that the city's regulations in terms of smoking that were adopted would apply to recreational cannabis as well, so those provisions would remain in effect. Somehow, the city's not preempted from regulating the use of those products, so. So moving on to the issue of, of regulation of the businesses, again, the, the new regulations, they implement a new state regulatory system for non-medical cannabis that's parallel to what the state is going to, how they're going to be regulating medical cannabis. And again, those licenses, they're intending to start issuing those licenses in early 2018. In regard to the personal cultivation regulations between medical and non-medical cannabis, there are some differences which are outlined in the slide that's on the screen, hopefully on your screen. Again, some of the differences are that, in regards to medical cannabis, the city can regulate or prohibit personal cultivation of medical cannabis. As you would remember, the city's draft ordinance would allow for personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor, subject to certain standards, performance standards. In regard to non-medical cannabis, the state provisions allow the city to reasonably regulate, but not ban indoor cultivation of a limited number of plants. The city can ban outdoor cultivation for non-medical purposes, so that's one of the differences. The number, the number of plants is lower for non-medical, and the city can regulate or prohibit outdoor. In either case, the city can still impose performance standards on indoor cultivation of non-medical, so if the council chooses to, you could apply and impose the same standards for, as were outlined in the staff report originally. And again, as I noted, again, the cultivation is, in medical, is related to a qualified patient or caregiver. Under the non-medical regulations, it's any adult 21 years or older who can, who can cultivate. And then the number of plants is indicated for medical is a maximum of six mature plants per qualified patient. And then, as we talked about, we've imposed a recommended maximum in a household or in a place, domicile. And in regard to recreational or non-medical, the limitation is six plants per house, household or house, so you can't. It's not based on the number of residents, it's just based on six plants maximum per, per residence. So those are some of the key differences. In regard to the business regulations for a non-medical versus medical, probably the key difference is that, for non-medical, if the city wishes to regulate or prohibit non-medical cannabis businesses, those, the, the way the state licensing works, they will issue licenses unless the city ordinances strictly, and specifically prohibit such businesses. So, where we have is considered a, typically in our ordinance, you know, the presumpt, uses in our ordinance, you know, the presumpt, uses are presumptively prohibited unless they're allowed. It's called permissive zoning. For the non-recreational biz, our recreational businesses, non-medical cannabis businesses, the city would want to go ahead and specifically identify if those businesses are going to be prohibited. Our permissive zoning regulations, we don't think will stand the test to preclude the state from issuing licenses. So there are a few council sort of issues for you to think about, policy issues related to this sort of personal, non-medical versus medical. And one is the cultivation question. As I indicated, the city has the ability to prohibit outdoor recreational, non-medical cultivation, if that's the council's choice. Or do you want to allow non-medical cultivation under the same performance standards that you are allowing both indoor and outdoor medical cultivation? So that's kind of a policy question before the council. In regard to the non-medical cannabis businesses, again, as we indicated, there are a same range of kind of businesses that are, relate to cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, transport, testing. The councils, in the draft ordinance for medical speaks to a range of permitted uses relating to distribution, transporting, testing, R and D. The city's draft ordinance would not allow for dispensaries and would not allow for cultivation, commercial cultivation. So again, part of the policy question for the council would be in terms of non-medical, those business kind of opportunities, does the council still want to impose the same sort of regulatory regime and allow those same range of potentially permitted uses, R and D, testing, et cetera, for non-medical purposes? So then again, that's a policy question for you. And again, a couple of the other issues that, that carry over from one to the other, another is delivery. You know, the council's previously indicated their acceptance of delivery of medical cannabis in Brisbane. And so the question is, would you want to allow for the delivery of, of non-medical cannabis? That would be another policy question for you. And lastly, there are issues of taxation. The city's current licensing and taxing structure doesn't really allow for any particular fee structure that would support additional taxing of, of cannabis businesses. So if that's something you want the city to pursue further in conjunction with permitting some range of activities, that would be something you want to direct the city staff to pursue further. So with that, it's kind of those policy questions are before the council this evening. We're recommending that you provide whatever direction you want in regard to non-medical cannabis and that we would, staff would advise and reintroduce the draft ordinance to reflect your, your policy direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this evening.
Thank you, John. Any questions from the council?
I, I do. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Lisa, this is, this is for you and Mario there at the police department. If, if we allowed non-medical plants to be cultivated, or not cultivated, I should say, how, how would you know the difference? I mean, of, say, a person that has medical marijuana versus, you know, they don't have medical marijuana and we don't allow cultivation? Is it by a complaint basis? How, how would that function?
Yes, it would have to be by complaint basis and then we would be able to then address it in that way and go in. And whether if it's medical, they would have to provide the medical marijuana, I mean, their medical cards. And then if it's non-medical, then we would address it in, in a violation.
Okay.
Can I, can I follow up on that question?
Sure.
Sure.
The way I read it from the staff report, and correct me if I'm wrong, because like sometimes we're talking about medical and not medical and so kind of the waters get a little bit muddied sometimes. But I, it was under my impression that you can't prohibit the growing of non-medical, correct? You, you can still allowed?
The city has to allow indoor personal cultivation of non-medical, up to six plants.
Right. So you can't ban.
You cannot prohibit, you can prohibit outdoor.
Right.
Cultivation, outdoor. You can still regulate the manner in which the indoor is cultivated if that's your desire.
So I, I had a couple of questions. I, I don't know how, I've seen what the medical marijuana stores dispensaries look like. In San Francisco, you see them and in other cities, they don't appear to be a blight on the communities that they're in. But what is California's setup for recreational or adult use of marijuana? Do they have to be standalone dispensaries, which I've seen in other states, in Washington State, the shops I've seen have all been, you know, sort of standalone. But can that product also be sold at a, at the liquor store or at, in those kind of settings? Or are they going to be forced to be standalone establishments? Do you know?
I know the one restriction that is definite is you cannot have a liquor license and a license to, for a cannabis dispensary. That's the one prohibition. Terms of could you have other goods aside from cannabis? I don't believe there's any restriction in the state license.
So it's more than likely that they would be sort of the standalone kind of storefronts that you typically see with the medical dispensaries. And then on page four of the staff report and page five of the staff report, under the table, which we also have on our screen, it talks about the maximum plants, six living plants under the Adult Use Cannabis Act.
Mary, which page four, which, which one?
The first one.
The staff report, page four and five of the staff report.
Is it here? Does it start with council options heading?
Yes, I'm looking at the table that's on four. And on page five, on the fourth paragraph, it seems, I'm, I'm not reading it right or, or its difference because under the table it says that there's maximum six living plants that can be within a single private residence or on the grounds. And then in the staff report, it says, it should be noted that the city does not have discretion over the maximum number of non-medical cannabis plants that may be grown per residence. And that seems contradictory to me.
As I understand it, and anybody, a lot of staff here who's very conversant in this, that the city cannot, that by state law, people are entitled to grow up to six.
Mm-hmm.
The city can't restrict that number below six or prohibit it fully. That's, maybe it's not clear in the language, but that was our intent.
But then it says that this should, it should be noted that the city does not have discretion over the maximum number of non-medical cannabis plants. And this says that it's a maximum of six.
If the, the state has established that the city can't change that number, it can't go up or down, if the state has created the, the maximum number, it's, it's not up to discretion of the city.
Okay. It's, this statement makes it sound that they can have as many as they want.
Yeah, apologize for that.
Okay.
Like, we can't say you can only have four.
Right. I understand that.
It's a state law override then.
Okay. And then in the staff report, you talk about taxation and that the state's going to impose significant state taxes on medical and non-medical. And that imposing a local tax could depress sales and stimulate a black market. But wouldn't that also be the case if we banned it completely and made us sort of a dry town? Wouldn't that also drive it underground and reduce state expectation of sales tax?
I mean, I, I think that's a reasonable conclusion. If there's a demand for a certain product and the local governmental rules don't allow for the sale of that product, people either find another way of, of obtaining it. I suppose that certainly would be a concern.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think it depends on, you know, if you were in a, in an area where every jurisdiction banned the, the retail sales, then that might be the case. But if you are in an area where, you know, you drive two or three miles and you can probably obtain it, the fact that the local jurisdiction in which you live may ban it, may not result in the same kind of black market.
Okay.
Again, that's a, you know, that's kind of a, a policy decision the council would have to make, that if it feels that by not allowing it in Brisbane might create a black market here, then, you know, you'd want to allow the retail sales.
Okay. And, and just like with tobacco sales, the state has a special tax that they put on for, for their use to avoid people smoking and the health risks involved with that. But also those sales are subject to sales tax by the local jurisdiction. And I'm assuming that sales tax would also be applied, whether there was a state tax on cannabis, there would also be a local sales tax applied to any sale in that jurisdiction. Is that correct?
It's the Bradley Burns taxes you're talking about, that 1%. And I'm, I'm not sure whether it is or not.
Is your microphone on, Clay?
It is.
Oh.
I was saying that it's the, what they call the Bradley Burns local sales tax, which is 1% that goes to local governments. And I'm not sure whether or not that is part of this or not. Something we'd have to look into.
I, I've spoken to people with medical cannabis and they do pay sales tax on top of their purchases in whatever local communities they're making that purchase on. So I would assume that if it were allowed in this community, we would still get the appropriate sales tax.
Yeah.
That would be over and above state sales tax.
I, I didn't know you could charge sales tax on, on medicine. But I guess, I guess so. That's interesting. I, I think it's wrong. You know, if people are using it as medicine, they should be charged sales tax. But, oh, well.
There's lots of discrepancies in sales tax, just like, I don't think toilet paper is a luxury good, but it's taxed also. So. Anyway. And then my other question was that if we can't ban indoor production of non-medical cannabis, indoor grow season has, is continuous. So people have multiple seasons. It's sort of, you designate that room in your house and that's what its new use is going to be because you have to set it up and do a lot of infrastructure changes to make it for that purpose. With an outdoor growing, it's one season per year. You don't get multiple crops. We don't have that kind of growing season. So it seems that it is less of a environmental hazard if we allow outdoor production for the limited amount that a personal amount would be. And that's just sort of an opinion that it, it would make it where it's not a continual use like an indoor production facility would be.
I guess the only counterargument to that, which we heard last time, was people were concerned about, neighbors were concerned about the smell. That's something we can get into when we start discussing.
And that's part of the, it also, I think, if it's allowed under medical, to make that distinction where, you know, our police department is having to go investigate whether it's medical or not medical is, is a difficulty, I think. But it's still legal. It's just indoors or outdoors.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, yes, I do.
That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, just to, to get clarification. So the ordinance, number 617, it's, it's in regards to medical marijuana cannabis, not, not the recreational. But we're talking about both because there's similarities in how you might enforce your ordinances for both.
Mm-hmm. Or the regulations. I think there was a concern about adopting the medical regulations without understanding the parameters about non-medical. And so wanted to provide that to you. And if you wanted to modify and have us reintroduce this ordinance to address both medical and non-medical, we certainly can do that.
Okay. Okay. So the, the Adult Use of Cannabis Act is, is really for information for the council. Okay. All right. So that, that was interesting, you know, that, that you mentioned the state won't issue a license that's inconsistent with local ordinances. And so that's why it's very important for the city to establish what it wants. Because if we don't do that, then someone could get a, a license from the state with all of the state options available to them. And, and once they get that license and they decide to come to Brisbane, we, we would lose some of our local control if we wanted to apply it. Okay. So, you know, comparing the, the two, so maximum number of plants. So for medical, we have the six mature plants and the 12 immature. And then the, the recreational one, it doesn't state whether it's mature, immature, it's just the amount of plants. Okay. What if, what if one person, you know, has their medical card and then their brother, sister or spouse, they want to grow their own thing? So I mean, you have one medical and one recreational. Is it just, how does, where does that all play into it? Are we not there yet?
Good question.
I don't think they're restrictive. I don't, I'm not aware of any provision that says if you are growing medical cannabis on a, in a, subject to one act, that you're prohibited from exercising your right under the other act. So I, you know, without, unless the city attorney wants to tell me otherwise, I would suspect.
Okay. So the house could do double.
An additive nature to that.
Okay.
Even though it says ma, what if it's like, but it says max six per household, right? So.
The problem is you're talking about two pieces of legislation.
Right.
And so you have a set of rules that apply to product A and process A, and you have another set of rules that apply to a separate, you know, it's a separate law basically that is imposed on a different standard. So I don't know that you could interpret that those two things are interchangeable.
Maybe you would say, okay, well, these specifically max six living plants planted, cultivated, harvested, dried. You would say, well, these are the recreational plants and these are the medical plants. So that's how.
Well, I would say that under the state law, a person, a 21-year-old who does not have a medical cannabis card in their residence, they can grow six plants. And whether, and then if there's another resident in that house who has a medical card, I'm not familiar anything in state law that sort of, if you're taking advantage of the provisions of law A, that you're now precluded from using the provisions of law B. That's what I'm not, I don't believe there's any cancellation factor between those two.
But whether it's one, but whether it's one person or four people all engaging in non-medical marijuana consumption, it would still be six.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So, Clay, you know, when we talked about this earlier in the week, you know, that, that this business is prohibited at the federal level. And thus makes it difficult for banks to process the funds. Right? So we have this, this cash type of business environment. to process the funds, right, so we have this, this cash type of business environment. Did you get a chance to kind of investigate any of that, or, you know, how the city could require that the transactions, you know, maybe over a certain amount be noncash, just so, just so you have a paper trail of this?
Well, I think it's one of the issues, I haven't been able to get any more information. I do believe, as I think I told you, that I believe San Francisco and Alameda County, if I'm correct, are looking at kind of public banks to try to deal with this issue, you know, that besides any number of issues you might think of, just actually somebody coming into City Hall and paying their business license with, with cash, if they've, let's say, in our case, reached $10 million and brought in $35,000 in cash, I mean, that, we're really not set up to receive that kind of money in the, you know, or the counter. I do believe that this is an issue that, that, you know, affects all these businesses, you know, throughout the states that they're operating in now, and, you know, it's, it's probably going to get addressed in some fashion, but the, the banking issue is, is one of those issues that, you know, kind of is a little bit, a little bit different for this industry than other industries.
Sure, and, and Chief, I'm, I'm sure that's a concern that you have, you know, that, a lot of cash, people walking around with that kind of money.
Yes, that's correct, people transporting that much money in a backpack, or have some type of security company, you know, to follow them, or to, to be there for, for security purposes, yes, it certainly is a, a concern.
That, okay, and then, you know, the, the item under, you know, regarding taxation, so potentially this, if the city could impose a business license tax, it could be on weight or some kind of, I don't know, like, criteria?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, right now, it'd be on gross receipts.
Gross receipts, okay.
Now, we've gotten creative, as, you know, in terms of how we approach this sometimes, so we could obviously look at something different, but if, if it was, I believe, a $10 million grossing business, it would pay a $35,000 business license tax. Now, if we wanted to look at something beyond that, we could, we could potentially look at that.
Yeah, I know, that was one of the requests, and I know, we'll get into that later. Okay. Okay, and then, you know, the doctors know for, for medical, are, the way that ordinance is written, the doctors know can't trump the ordinance, if, if we state, you know, six mature plants and 12 immature, that's it, the doctors know it can't say, you know, my client, or my patient needs more, thus they can violate that. Okay. And then, okay, and then, just the last one, it's, it's in the ordinance itself, on the second page, number one, where it says, no more than a total of 25 plants may be grown at any residence. The council, if it wishes, could reduce that number, correct?
We did, I think, didn't we?
It was 50.
We, we went from 50, it was 50 before, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, we asked you to reduce it already.
Okay, so we, we could reduce it further if, if the council so chooses.
Yes, you could.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open it up for the public hearing? Nope, okay. So I have one slip from Michelle DeZitzler, is she here? Would you like to come give a public comment?
Hi, my name is Michelle DeZitzler.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
You can move it towards you, there you go.
My name is Michelle DeZitzler, this is my husband and partner, Randy DeZitzler.
Nice to meet you.
And we run a cannabis startup, and we wanted to talk to you regarding reconsidering open the discussion regarding cannabis businesses, and particularly non-storefront retail delivery model. Recently, Oakland, Sacramento, and Berkeley started doing city permits for delivery-only models, and they have permitted, they started releasing regulations for permits and have seen success with it, so would you consider looking into possibly reopening this discussion? Randy, would you want to?
Yeah, so also to address some of the points that I heard you guys discuss while you were discussing the issue of cannabis, to your point, Mr. Lance, there are regulate, under those proposed state regulations, there will be a track and trace, all cannabis businesses that touch the product have to use a track and trace system to track the product movement through the chain as it moves from one custodian to the next one, so they call it something seed to sale, basically, they want to be able to track the movement of every single plant, every single thing that comes off that plant. I think also, to some of the concerns that the council may have, in terms of the type of activity, delivery businesses typically are more inconspicuous, they don't have any exterior signage, they don't have any foot traffic, they, I think, at least in our opinion, it's a, it's a slightly simpler model when compared to a traditional storefront retail that attracts foot traffic, can passersby, and can be identified, you know, by people driving by.
And currently, there are as strict regulations for safety and safety regulations that have been kind of already stated in other cities, so there are kind of standards that have been created. We also believe that accessibility will limit the amount of criminal activity, and being able to work with the city and the city council will allow for safer streets.
Thank you. I don't have any further slips, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll bring-
Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dana Delworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I kind of read some of the materials prior, and there was a planning, or there was a meeting where people made comments, and I thought that this was sent to committee, so is this it coming out of committee, or is this a different layer of what you did about two weeks ago? Question mark.
Why don't you, I don't know, but why don't you give all of your comments and then discuss?
Okay, just because, one of the things that I was aware of is that the reason that there's the promoting of doing outdoor growth is so that it's reduction of indoor lights and those kinds of mechanical systems, that it's just not a sustainable practice, and yet, the counter to that is that when it's done in such volume, it, and if it's not done properly on land, that there can be chemicals and fertilizers and stuff like that, so it ends up having, when you do, when you do cultivate on land, you also have issues of, you know, the, the, what it takes to make the production, as it would for any, any food source. One of the things, if it was the previous thing that I noticed, that you didn't acknowledge, was to support festivals, and if, I guess HempCon and those places used to be at, or still are, at Cow Palace, and since the, the use of Cow Palace is being considered for housing, and a similar kind of venue hasn't been found, I, I think Brisbane should be open to supporting the festivals, and that, and then there's a lot of information out there about eating establishments that are kind of being, learning to cul, to, to cook in a positive way. I really question this whole idea about a whole lot of money, if you're cultivating for your own use, what exchange of money is there? In fact, to me, it seems it's so that there isn't an exchange of money, and so I, I didn't quite understand that, and I think when Carolyn had mentioned that, you know, the fact that you're not allowing dispensaries, you are really ignoring a source of income for the city of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just want to address the one question about subcommittees, do we know if this was considered by a subcommittee?
No.
No, okay, so it came right back to the council. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, so seeing no hands, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
If, if I may, I'd like to just ask a question, or just make a comment, so on, on page six, at the top of the, of the page-
On the staff report, or on-
On the staff report, yeah, it says, "Medical cannabis ordinance would allow by right in certain zoning districts and conditionally in others research and development in the testing of medical cannabis." And it says, "The proposed medical cannabis ordinance would also conditionally allow the manufacturing, processing, warehousing, transporting, and distribution of medical cannabis for non-retail purposes in the TC1 district," and that, that's the industrial park, right? So, so based upon that, and I know it's also in the ordinance itself, so you, you could have a delivery syst, you know, if they went through the proper channels, got their use permit, could they deliver then from the industrial park?
It might depend on the state licensing, I think the intent was not to have a retail component, that's what speaks about distribution for non-retail purposes, so, I mean, that was based on previous direction from the council, and that the planning commission endorsed as well, but-
Okay, so this, this would be a wholesale type of operation, and, and only for medical?
Yes, this is all related to medical.
All related to medical, okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any further follow-up questions?
Now, did we do a motion to close public hearing, or you want to leave it open?
I see, actually, one hand being raised, so.
Somebody.
You have to come up to the mic.
Come on up.
I apologize for taking up your time again. I also wanted to mention, there's the trailer bill, which is something I think that should be looked into and discussed. In the trailer bill, they're discussing combining medical and recreational together under one roof, so a lot of the regulations are going to be merged, so when you consider medical and recreational, within a, hopefully, a few weeks and months, we'll know furthermore whether there's going to be a big difference between the two, so just kind of informational. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
There a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council discussion?
Well, I had a question for staff, it's what Michelle had just brought up about a trailer bill, are you aware of that?
I haven't seen the language, but I am aware of it, and the idea that the governor didn't, I understand it's the governor's introduction, that he didn't want to have two licensing schemes at the state level for non-medical versus medical, I don't, I'm not aware of anything in the trailer bill that would, would affect the local jurisdiction's ability to regulate land use between medical and non-medical, if the local jurisdiction has so chosen. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So do we want, are we to discussion, or are we still in staff?
Yes, we're at the, well, are there any further questions?
I, I do have one other question, and it's back to that, that 25 plants, so no more than a total of 25 plants may be grown at any residence, so that, that could be 25 mature plants. Okay, and the only way to get to that is that you're a caregiver, and you have, you know, five, five patients, right, could you grow up to six mature ones?
Yep. I'm sorry, was that, again, council member, Lance?
Okay, so, so, and the, and it's in bold writing here, and you also highlighted in the beginning, so no more than a total of 25 plants may be grown at any residence, so we have the restriction, at least how it's here, you know, an individual person can only grow up to six mature plants. The 25 plants that are in here could be 25 mature ones, and the only way that you could do that in your residence is if you're a caregiver, and you had five patients that were sort of, you know, that had medical cards.
Or multiple cardholders reside-
Multiple cardholder, okay, that's right, that's another option, too. Okay, just, just wanted to-
But that would also entail the 100, the-
Square feet, right?
Hundred square foot limit also.
Yes, that's-
The 25 plants, but all of the grow areas combined on the entire residence would have to be less than 100 square feet, or a 10 by 10 area.
Correct, they all have to be within that area.
In the same spot.
One area.
One pot, one area.
That would be to prevent having the, the grow houses that we've seen in the community, yes, that's correct.
And it says, here, the San Mateo County Narcotics Task Force said that it is realistic that approximately 25, it says cannabis plants, but it doesn't say mature ones, but are they stating that 25 mature plants could grow within the 100 square foot-
Square feet, yes, yes.
Footprint, okay.
Really? I looked on the internet, and I don't know about that, at least, you know, from the information that, you know, if it was, if it was accurate, I mean, unless those things are like trees, you know, I, I don't know if that's, if that's factual, that they're mature, because those things, from what I've seen, bush out.
They said each fully grown indoor plant usually is approximately three to four feet in diameter.
And-
Without the leaves touching each other, which is generally what's recommended, so they're not drawing the water from, or the nutrients from each other, so that was the number that they, they said reasonably 25 plants, it gives you enough room to be able to go in and maintain them properly.
Do the math on that, I mean, if three foot in diameter, right, and over 100 square feet, I don't know, without touching each other?
Well, if you're talking about little babies, I mean, think of like, your tomato plants that you grow.
It doesn't-
Depends on if you're growing them in, you know, your, your plant is as big as your pot, basically, so the bigger pot you have your planting, if you're planting in, in soil, the bigger your plant can grow, and if you plant something in a smaller pot, you're going to bonsai your tree, or your tomato, or whatever, and it'll be smaller.
Three foot in diameter, right? Three foot plus three foot plus three foot is nine foot, and you're talking about a 10-foot area.
Right, so you, you would think that you could only have-
Without touching each other.
Ten plants, and still not walk through them.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, is that it doesn't add up, but, okay, it's the new math, this is common core.
So, so personally, I would like to keep the medical and the recreational as close as possible to each other for the rules on growing, and for, so that we're not putting our law enforcement into, you know, who's legal and who's not, and who's got a medical card and who doesn't, and whether you can have more plants because you have one, or you don't have one, I'd like to try to keep them as close as possible. I think that if we're going to be allowing delivery of medical cannabis, that we should allow for the delivery of non-medical cannabis, more than half of our state, our voters, I should say, voted to make non-recreational marijuana available, and I think that we should honor their system and make it available, I don't think we need to go overboard on it, and I'm happy to compromise on most of it. I don't think we really need a storefront dispensary in Brisbane, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, or that we want to restrict it, but I think that, you know, allowing for testing and performance standards and all that on medical, if we're going to do that, we should allow it for the non-medical, because I think the products are going to be crossover. What, right now, is medical, is going to be recreational and, and the inform- What right now is medical is going to be recreational and the information and the technology is going to go from one to the other, so I think it's going to be very difficult to have different rules for the different products.
If I may, so staff, I mean, so what we have before us, the ordinance is for the medical part of marijuana. And then the recreational part, you're looking for a direction from the council, and then sometime in the near future, you'd come back with some kind of draft ordinance that reflects the, the direction that the council is giving.
Our suggestion is we would just reintroduce this ordinance and not do a separate ordinance for non-medical, but we could if that was the council's direction.
So we would combine, we have one cannabis ordinance.
Yes.
And then it would highlight some medical stuff, but then also.
However the council wants to treat medical versus non-medical in any given area of land use regulation.
All right. Yeah, you know, I agree with you, Terry, that having fewer differences is better, but, you know, I think there are some areas where perhaps you're going to have to keep it separate.
Oh, I'm sure some of it will need to be just to, to be in compliance with the two different laws, you know, that there's going to be some differences in, in where you can regulate, but I think keeping it as close as possible and not making it where we're attempting to be a dry county, so to speak, and drive all of this underground and to, you know, I think that there's opportunities here and.
Opportunity for what?
Well, I think there's opportunities for, for businesses that, you know, we wanted to allow some cannabis uses, and I think there's opportunities for business license fees. I mean, there's going to be a lot of money in this business, coming out of this business soon, and I think that, you know, many different communities have dealt with it in, in California with the medical, and I think it's just going to be increasing on that for the recreational, where the money is going to, where the income and revenues and, and problems are going to be. I don't think a lot of the communities that have medical dispensaries have had major problems with them. They seem to be fairly well-integrated into many communities, so. I guess I have less fears than others about this.
So, you know, so you bring up, you know, that interesting point, you know, looking at it from a business perspective, and I just want to get your, your take on this, Chief Macias. I mean, you know, if the council was to move forward with, you know, looking at this as a business opportunity, what would be some of the requirements that you would want in place if that was a direction to go? Or if you, if you thought, you know, yeah, that might be a business opportunity, but it's not really worth it to the community to pursue that, that direction? And I'm making you like a sixth council member, so I'm sorry.
Certainly is council's decision. I think we put in some performance standards that would, that we would, there, I can't remember what pages they are, but they're listed.
Chapter 17.33 in the draft ordinance. I don't have a page number, apologies.
And that would put, it would put it in the local, for the local authority for us to be able to make sure that they're complying. So if that, it certainly is council's decision, you know, following these performance measures, which surely make our job much easier.
Okay, you're dancing around that one pretty good, Lisa. What do you think is the police department on personal use? Okay, I'm okay with the medical part, but I'd like to know a police perspective. Is this something that, you know, from, from your perspective, from, you know, Mario's and the whole police department? I know it's our decision, right, no matter what, but I really want some guidance from, from you on this is, is what do you think? You know, just a, how you feel answer, police answer.
Police answer, not as a resident answer, so, as a police answer, certainly, I'm sure it would, it would bring additional, you know, time for staff, there's no question. I just, personally, I just don't know if that, if it's something that would be a fit in our community, I don't know. I certainly think that in bigger cities, it, it kind of blends in with the communities here. I think it would certainly stand out much more than it would in, in bigger cities, but.
Okay.
It's.
Yeah, I'm.
I'd, you know, honestly, I'd think I'd have to do more research to kind of see what other cities are experiencing in regards to the dispensaries, to see what kind of problems or concerns their law enforcement have had or encountered before I can really give an honest answer.
Yeah, and really, that's kind of where I'm at right now, because I'm not ready to pass something for personal use, even though the state law says something that, you know, I want to take a more conservative approach than just say, yeah, okay, let's just open up the, you know, open up the door, then we'll find out, and then all of a sudden, you know, it becomes a budgetary issue that, oh, we've got to hire, you know, more police officers, you know, or, or, you know, something, you know, something cropped up. You know, I don't know, and, and we are a small town that's pretty condensed, you know, we're very condensed, and so, you know, I, I have concerns there, you know, that, you know, and I'm not ready to make a recommendation, because I don't really know enough, you know, to, to make that, so, you know, thank you for that, for saying that.
And you are referring to dispensaries, correct? Not just the, the manufacturing and the processing as we are discussing for?
Dispensaries, you know, because I, I mean, I've heard, you know, probably you hear more horror stories than, than good stories, but, you know, I hear some of the robberies that have gone on, and that's, you know, violent robberies, you know, not, not that the people inside the dispensary weren't doing anything, but there's people outside that wanted the drugs, that, you know, that it attracts, attracts people, that, you know, it's generally seems to be more of a cash business and, and a crop business, and it's like, you know, two commodities. So I don't know, I'm.
The storefronts that I see in the city, mostly in South of Market and Outer Mission, all have a security officer outside the front door of the establishment, and anyone who wants to enter the establishment needs to establish their identity.
Same in Washington and in Denver also, where they do have recreational.
Yes, and so all of those dispensaries have a, let's say, a valet parking guy who sort of, you know, is, is standing in front of all the establishments, you know, not looking thuggish or anything, but they have a security personnel at, at every medical cannabis dispensary that I have seen.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I'm not ready to go there.
I would like to jump in now.
Sure.
If I may.
Of course.
If I may. I'm really glad that, it sounds like most of us are on the same page in terms of trying to keep it as similar as possible in our ordinance with regards to medical versus non-medical. I think that just gets really tricky to regulate, and I would like to keep things as easy on our police force as possible. Obviously, something like max number of plants, we can't touch that, so I think whatever is already differentiated by the law, because there are some differences, and obviously we need to maintain that, but in other areas, I think it's fine to have whatever we move forward with be the same. I have no problem with the manufacturing, processing, warehousing, transporting, distribution, any of that. We do have, you know, a thriving commercial district, and I think that those, those locations would be great for those types of businesses. I think that those are fairly discreet. You don't want to advertise that you have a warehouse full of marijuana, so I anticipate that in those, those businesses that we do have that are in the commercial processing, so to speak, would, would definitely keep things discreet. I have no problem with a dispensary, but I'm hearing some concern over that. I think one of the things is that you really, unfortunately, you're not really going to know what's going to happen in your community until you do it, until you, we can't definitively say what's going to happen in the future, if this is going to bring crime or not, especially if you think about Brisbane, we're a very low-crime city, and so what may, what, what may bring crime, you know, to San Francisco, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to translate to our community. But I understand the concern with a dispensary, and I'm okay with not having a dispensary in town if, if that, I'm willing to compromise on that, if that's something that is a really big concern to everyone else. I do understand what Chief Macias is saying, is that because we have so few sort of retail businesses in town, that that might stand out, and that I understand. It would be interesting to see businesses that weren't necessarily so traditional dispensaries, but places that were, say, a cafe, like Ms. Stillworth brought up. So I'm not sure if those are considered dispensaries or what those are classified as, but that's an interesting discussion to, to have. I think that having delivery systems is definitely a safer alternative, as we heard tonight. I said that, you know, a year ago when we were looking at this issue. So if we're not going to have actual dispensaries, I think that having delivery businesses is a great alternative, because again, they're discreet, they don't want to advertise that they have this highly valuable product, you know, they don't want to attract people to them to, to cause any problems, and that's still a great way that our community can get what they need, whether it be medical or non-medical. So that's kind of where I'm at on the issue. I'm wondering, and I don't know too much about this, but I'm wondering if really what it breaks down to in the end, when we start looking at medical versus non-medical, if really, is it, is it a different, it'll be interesting to see if it's different requirements in the way that it's processed, or if it really just kind of boils down to how much it's cost and how much it's taxed, and that determines medical versus non-medical. So I'm, I'm interested if staff can speak to, is the quality of the product different versus for medical, or is it just kind of boiled down to the way it's sold?
I'm not that familiar with the licensing requirements, and that's kind of where getting at with this trailer bill, is if they're streamlining what is required in terms of state licensing between the two different products, would lead one to believe that their standards are going to be made more uniform as well. I mean, we could do more research on that, certainly, if you're, you're inclined.
Okay, well, that's, that's where I'm at on the issue.
You know, I got a question for you, Madison. So, you know, all those uses for cannabis, you're just looking at the industrial park, not downtown Brisbane, like for a dispensary or any, any type of, of operation, it would just be back here, the industrial park?
I think absolutely we should be allowing those businesses to, to exist within our industrial zones, in our industrial park, and, you know, potentially out of the lands at some point. I think that that would be a really big missed opportunity to not capitalize on what's going to be a huge industry. I'm, I have an open mind on this issue, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to a dispensary or a business that surrounded, you know, food service that has cannabis within it, but I'm definitely sensitive to the fact that there are people that feel strongly that this isn't a right fit for our community, and, you know, to respond to what Chief Macias said, because we are a small town, having something like a dispensary where we don't have that many businesses, it would maybe be fairly obvious, and so I'm willing to compromise, like, it seems like Clark really doesn't, doesn't seem too keen on the idea of a dispensary, and, and I'm okay with that. I'm not super pro-dispensary, where I'm going to fight that tooth and nail, but I really would like to see us be open-minded enough to allow some sort of industrial use around cannabis in our community, and I do think that that would be something that would be safe. And of course, you know, this is a new territory in our state. We can see how it is in Washington, we can see how it is in Denver, but we aren't really going to know how it's going to play out until it plays out, and I don't want us to be late to the game. I want us to be open-minded, I want us to be welcoming of these businesses, and I would like us to see, I would like us to be progressive and not puritanistic and, and be accepting of, of this industry that's here, so. Does that answer your question?
It does, I just wanted to get clarification, you know, where you thought it would be, because I, I'm, you know, kind of leaning in the, in the same direction, you know, having it be in the industrial park. You know, I do have concerns, though, about the cash operation and, you know, in a further draft, I'd like for us to kind of work that out. I also think that, that we should have some kind of business license tax. Here where Clark's coming from, I think there could be additional, you know, needs for police services, perhaps other government services, and I think then we should be compensated, you know, additionally on, on top of that. You know, just reading the information, it didn't really seem like there was a lot that was going to local government, besides, you know, say, I guess, property tax, I mean, sales tax. I think there should be an additional layer, and I'd like for us to, to explore that, that route. In regards to the personal use, though, I still have a hard time with the 25 plants, and so I'd like to see, you know, what the council feels about that, trying to reduce that, that, that number. I know that you could have multiple patients in one house, and you don't want to, you know, restrict that, but it just, it just seems like it opens it up for loopholes, and we've seen those loopholes before with, with certain grow houses.
John, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify something with Cliff. Right now, the, the ordinance, the way it's written, does allow for businesses in, for research and development in Crocker Park, there's performance standards in here, right?
That's correct. The ordinance, since it was only really aimed at medical.
Yeah.
So the, you know, the policy question, if the council wants to expand that sort of range of R and D and industrial to non-medical, that's where we would modify the ordinance.
And then, since it is a business, there is a business license fee that goes along with that, and it's based on.
Revenue.
Amount of money, right? I mean, the revenue that, that they do, so.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, you know, we, we have, you know, liquid storage.
Well, I mean, no, I'm just on the business license fee in general.
I get that.
So you're saying.
On top of.
On top of something, in addition to.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think you can make a nexus there.
And I, and I think that if you're looking at a large-scale business, that we're talking, you know, we're talking about personal grow, and we're also talking about maybe a larger-scale business, they are going to have, you know, need a business plan, and, and we could do a special fee for that kind of business, but it'd have to be separate. And I, for the 25 plants, they're still regulated to a 10 by 10 area, and unless they're just little saplings, mature plants, they're not going to get 25 in the 10 by 10 area.
Yeah.
I think we're talking, talking two different things there, because I think Cliff was talking, if I understood correctly, about the warehouse and stuff like that.
Well, we talked about the warehouse, but he also was saying that 25 plants seemed like too much, and I think we're addressing that by the 10 by 10 area on any residence.
Yeah, it was 50 last time it came before us, we asked that to be reviewed.
Yeah, no, I'm just, again, I'm, there's the issue with, you know, the warehouse and, and doing the recreational and the medical, and we already have it in our ordinance about the medical, but opening up to, to the recreational business opportunities, and I'm, I'm in favor of that in the industrial park. Then I transitioned to the personal, and I have some concerns about the 25 plants, and I'd like to hear from the council members in regards to that.
I have input on that.
Okay.
For the 25 plants, I mean, if we think about, we've come a long way. I mean, we hardly had any restrictions in what we were looking at in the beginning, and then it became 50 plants, and then we were all kind of baffled about. And then we were all kind of baffled about how that would fit in 100 square feet and what that would look like. And to me, a 25 based on what we're really trying to get at, and like your concern is about a grow house, right? And that I totally understand. But you have to, to realize that the 25 plants can only be in 100 square feet. So you're not going to get a grow house, I mean, unless the house is 300 square feet, then yes. If they were using 100 of it, then that would look like a grow house, right? But we don't, we don't see, we don't see houses that small. It's more of a shed. So I would, I would think in actual practice, 25 plants in 100 square feet is contained enough where it's not going to have that type of impact.
You know, there, there's one way that I, I would feel comfortable with, you know, accepting the 25. And, and Chief Macias, if you could provide some research and just, uh, you know, show, you know, how much marijuana can be grown by 25 plants? And, and then provide some kind of value to that. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. Maybe, you know, you're not going to have the big operation, but you might have a little, you know, operation. I just, this is in our neighborhood, right? These are on our, in our residential streets. And I just, again, is trying to make sure that folks that, uh, you know, that might feel uncomfortable with this can at least feel somewhat comfortable that, you know, there aren't people coming in and out. Look at, we, we know that people use their homes for a variety of uses. And some are legal and some are not legal. And, and so, you know, I just want to make sure that, that if the police have a complaint and they go check that out and then, and the guy says, hey, I got my 25 plants here, what's the big deal? And the police say, okay, you're right, you got your 25 plants and you have all your medical cards. And all right, then you're, you're good. I just, again, I just wanted to kind of understand what that could, could, could be. Cause when, you know, we had that grow house, they had all of the proper, um, paperwork, right? They, they had all the caregivers and all the medical cards and it was all legit, right? And then the police couldn't do anything about that. In the end, it was the, the owner of the house that kicked the renters out. If they didn't do that, then, you know, they would have kept on doing their thing.
So.
Is that, is that, is that a reasonable request, Chief Macias?
So you would like to know how men, how much can, in weight, is it of those 25 plants?
That value would.
Oh, what the value would be?
Yeah.
But what, what is that? I really want to challenge you to think about what you're asking because let's say you get that information. It's $50,000 in value, 10,005. Like what is the threshold where you're like, under 10,000, we're good, but over 10,000, it's scary. Like what is that information? Is that really? I, because I feel like you're concerned and I think that the information you're gathering is used to justify that concern and I understand that. But I think that no matter really what she's going to bring back, I don't think it's going to make you feel more comfortable. Like is there a number that you would feel comfortable at?
Is there a threshold number? Yes, there, there would be. And so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with 18 mature plants.
No, I mean, like the value, if she brought back a value to you and said, this is how much this is worth.
I have no idea what it is. I'm not in the business.
Right. But would any, would, would there be a value that would be low enough where 25 plants would be okay for you?
Yeah, say if it was, you know, under $10,000, yeah, okay. I, I'd probably be okay with something like that.
Okay. If I may from the chair, Sergeant Garcia can respond to that.
So in regards to the 10 by 10 and 25 plants, it's going to really differ on the species and the type and the amount of turnover you can produce from that area. Um, if you want to grow 10 trees, you can grow 10 trees. But if you want to grow, um, enough in that area in 25, again, it comes down to dwarfing it down. And that would differ in terms of what THC content you'd get, how much you could harvest from it. And the current law of Prop 115, uh, 215 does not, does not prohibit the amount you can produce through your plants and store. You, you just can't. There's, I mean, they could literally harvest every three or four weeks, depending on the species, they could just keep storing that, if that answers your question.
Okay. All right. So you could keep, as long, you, you're limited to the amount of plants you can have growing in your house. So you, you, you harvest it and then you, you have it in your closet, there's no restrictions on that.
No, and not how many times you can harvest.
It's just on the amount of plants that you have.
Correct.
See, I mean, I'm just, again, I just.
So if you had 18 versus 25, it doesn't really make a difference.
You know, this was.
What are you comfortable with, Cliff?
Right? So you, this information kind of comes out.
Cliff, what are you comfortable with?
So.
So you know what, what I, what I am really comfortable with, and we've talked about this in the past, was that, that it was six, six plant, six mature plants and the 12 immature plants per, per, um, household. And, and so.
So that would mean that if it was a caretaker, that they could only have one patient, right? Or they can only grow no more than six, which.
You know, I could, I could, I could be, you know, persuaded to go with one, uh, person. But that, that's, that's probably really about it. So.
I think we're going to disagree on it.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I mean, I feel like, I feel like that's unreasonable. I mean, it says local government may reasonably regulate number of plants, but I feel like, I feel like that's unreasonable to me. That I don't have a magic number of plants, but I, I have, like, thinking of real life scenarios with real people who have real medical problems, who need this medication. And I think that, I think that that's too low of a number. Um, one thing, I don't want to digress too much, but I did want to respond to your thing about the business license. And I want us to all just be aware that if we're not having dispensaries, to my knowledge, that we're not going to really be able to benefit from those hefty 35% sales tax, taxes. Um, so it would make sense to look at, like, we're, we're not going to be able to tap in to that, um, those benefits of those taxes because all of those businesses will be in, to my understanding, wholesale. If they're doing warehousing, they're not selling directly to the public. So if we're going to be looking at this as a business opportunity and tapping into those revenues, then we're going to have to think of another way, like you said, with another layer of a special tax for that type of business, if we're going to really be able to tap into the lucrative, this lucrative market. So I want us to think about that because we talk about how this is, bring, brings in so much money to certain cities that have it. But if we don't have any dispensaries or, um, brick and mortar businesses that are selling to the public, then we're probably not with, going to get those type of taxes unless maybe through a delivery service. So it's important to consider that.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's information that I'd like for you to bring back to the, to the council.
Go ahead.
That's, I mean, Madison's correct. I mean, if you, the Bradley Burns tax, which is the 1% local sales taxes, is basically a retail tax. So anything that would be considered a wholesale tax, you're, you're, you don't, you don't, you don't get that. We do get the business license tax right now on gross receipts. Um, and that just depends on what size the, uh, the business is. But we could carve out, I believe, and the issue is, um, there was some discussion about nexus and stuff. If you're going to have a general business license tax, uh, you don't need the nexus.
You don't need the nexus, okay.
Just need not be confiscatory in the amount.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
So on.
And that could be wholesale operation, doesn't have to be retail.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of the ones that we have in place that are kind of extraordinary and they're, they're, they're definitely not retail, so.
Okay.
Okay. Terry?
So, right now, in Brisbane proper, in someone's home, they can't grow for profit. So the plants that we would allow someone to grow are just for personal use. They're, they can't be used to sell or anything. So there's less reason for people to be hoarding it or having a large amount, um, if it's just for personal use. And, and whether it's medical.
Chief smiling that, yeah, people are going to, you know, not go down a path that, hey, here's my plants. I'm in within the, the, the letter of the law and then see you later, police. And then they go do their illicit operation. I mean, I, again, you know, just because that might not, um, you know, what you're saying, you know, might prohibit some, but if someone's, you know, criminally motivated, they're, they're going to try and get around the system.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that right now, and the other reason to allow outdoor cultivation is to avoid that because you don't do a harvest every three months or two months, whatever it takes to grow your plants indoor, you have one per year. So whatever your three plants or six plants or 25 plants, that can fit into that 10 by 10 area, that's only one harvest instead of a year-round operation in someone's home.
So are you saying that then?
Allowing outdoor.
Allowing outdoor or not indoor?
Uh, you, you can't prohibit indoor.
That's right. So.
But we can allow outdoor, which is just not modifying someone's home.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with the outdoor with the same guidelines as the medical. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, again, I don't have any problem with that. It's just, you know, I wanted to just make sure that whatever we put forward doesn't, uh, provide those loopholes. And maybe in the end, we can't, we can't even close them all. Um, but still, um, you know, I think we should do our best. You know, if you're that, if you're that person who live next door to that grow house, you, you know, you probably didn't like seeing those people come in, in and out of that house.
No, we don't.
Every day, right? And we don't want that. So, you know, again, it's like, let's, let's come up with some, some legislation that, that at least tries to, to close it the best we can.
I just have a different philosophy. I feel like 100 square feet is not a grow house. It's just not a grow, it's not. It's, it's a room. A grow house is like, you're in the kitchen, you're in the bathroom, you're in all the bedrooms. Like that's a grow house. And if we remember back when we, talking to, um, when we were talking about this a year ago, I had asked, how many grow houses have we had? We had like maybe three and one, there was, it's not like we, this is a big issue where we're, we're seeing them popping up all over the place. And that one was handled. And I think with these, I think these restrictions are strict enough where it could, it could allow our police to have enough power to remove an operation that, you know, wasn't, wasn't legal. I think that when you look at people who do this as, you know, business, they're going to go to places where things are more lenient, where they know. Like that's why you see these things happening in Humboldt County because you're allowed like 99 plants. So I, I see that those are the places where people go for those types of operations. And I think that 25 is reasonable.
Yeah, so let's just see what the council.
Yeah, should that, yeah.
You know, with that, that personal, um, amount.
So I have a question for the chief. So, um, if, if we, um, go with the same regulations that have been suggested and in the future we find that there's, there's grow houses, um, being, you know, popping up for personal cultivation, is that something we can then, we can then in the future, you know, and put more stringent regulations on? You know, it's something we can address in the future if a problem comes up, rather than trying to, you know, hypothesize what may happen.
I would think that you could, I'll defer to John, but I would think that you could, you could amend the ordinance, yes, if that became a problem.
Okay. Um, and also with respect to, um, the dispensaries, I think I heard some suggestion, um, by, by, um, by Cliff Lance about, you know, well, it sounds like people are, um, okay with dispensaries in our industrial park, but not necessarily in our residential section. Um, and, you know, I.
Um, I don't.
No? Okay, that's, maybe that may.
I don't, I don't think, I wasn't okay with that.
I think he was, was.
I'm just talking about industrial, you know, having industrial use, um, in the, in the park.
Type of thing.
I, so I, I do want to get some more information in regards to the dispensary part.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to see what, what the council thought about, um, you know, restricting dispensaries in the, in residential sections, not in the industrial.
Ultimately, it's whatever three council people agree on something. And so, you know, it's.
So I, I'm just curious, you know, what, what you all, you know, Lori and Clark, what do you think about the, um, the personal and the, um, caregiver medical marijuana, amount of plants that you, you can grow?
The 25 plants where we're, we're talking about, uh, point one under, under B.
That's correct.
Um, well, we addressed that last time, uh, if I may.
Sure.
Where I'm coming from is, uh, last time it was 50 and we asked Chief, go back and, you know, reduce that number, look at it. And, and you asked Narcotics, uh, County Narcotics Task Force, and you came up with the number 25, which is half of what it was before. I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I mean, but I don't believe that you could grow 25 plants if it's, if it's three, three, eight, three foot in diameter. I mean, we're talking, you know.
It's nine plants.
Front row here, maybe, you know, one more and then back to Michelle there. Square feet is not, you know, not that big. I mean, you, I mean, you kind of do the math is, if the maximum or the plant is three feet in diameter, you can only put nine in there. At least in my brain, that's, you know what I mean? I, I don't, you know, and they can't touch each other. So I, I don't, um. So 25 is a number what the police came up with and okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just don't think it might be a little, little unrealistic. But we had 50 before, we've reduced it 50%, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and I, I feel the same way. I would defer to what, what the police think is a reasonable amount. So I'm okay with the 25.
All right. Yeah, you know, I, again, I'm cool with the, with the ordinance. It was just that amount of, of the personal for, uh, the individual and the caregiver. And you guys have, you know, expressed your opinion and, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that.
If I, if we have a problem, absolutely, we should reevaluate this, 100%. You know, I don't want to see an operation happening that's making neighbors feel uncomfortable whatsoever. So, you know, the minute that, that is the case, I commit to absolutely reevaluating this and we'll have a better idea of exactly how many, we'll have an example of how many plants were there, what it looked like in our community. And I think that we'll have more information to, um, to clarify this if need be.
Yeah, but you know, as, um, as Mario had said, you, you can grow the plants, harvest, and then grow another 25 and just keep, you know, doing that. And, you know, I am, and I guess there's nothing we could really do about that anyways. If someone's got that motive, they're, they're, they're going to, they're going to operate that way. Um, when you grow 25, there's a lot more of incentive than if you, if you can only grow six. So, um, so yeah, no, so I'm, again, you know, you guys have spoken and I'm, but let's move on because we've got a lot of other stuff on the agenda.
I've got a question for John. And John, have you, you know, are you confused yet? I mean, okay, let me, I guess the question would be, have you heard any, any changes to this ordinance, the way it's written tonight?
Well, the thing we're looking for direction for and I'm hearing is that when it comes to the industrial sort of uses, the processing or the testing, that it seems to be the, the direction of the council that you're comfortable with, whether it's medical or non-medical. So we would amend this ordinance to reflect that, if that indeed is the direction.
The effect of medical.
The idea of the, the, um, non-medical and medical cultivation on an individual lot, if it's, ends up being that there's going to be two standards, one if it's recreational and one if it's medical and.
But it looks like that, that's the direction of the council, to have 25 plants for the personal and the caregiver one, the medical and then.
And the last, you know, the last issue that, you know, you're, has been discussed and whether you get some resolution or not, since dispensaries weren't, the direction we had was not to allow for dispensaries or retail uses. We didn't, there, there are state limitations in terms of separation from residences and whatnot. Um, so if you are interested in dispensaries, whether it's, you know, storefront or non-retail in, in Crocker Park or something, we would have to look at what those state buffers, you know, distance from school, residential, whether or not any of, and what sites in town, if you want to go that route.
I've heard Madison be interested in that. I don't know, Terry is interested. I've heard Madison be interested in that, I don't know, Terry is interested, I'm not.
I'm not interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, I am interested in getting the information.
Okay.
In the industrial park and then also, uh, looking at the, uh, other options for taxation.
Okay.
So...
I'm interested in the, for the industrial park, but not for the residential, so I'm interested to hear what the regulations are.
And, and do we have a consensus on whether, um, the delivery would apply to both medical and non-medical, the delivery ability, 'cause right now, medical is able to be delivered and we wanna keep that in...
Yeah.
As part of the, the recreational and that would open up Madison's question about whether we had a non-storefront delivery system that we could utilize the sales tax from, but wouldn't have walk-up customers.
I think the only, we have to look into the state regulations again, I believe that the only place you can deliver from is gonna be...
Your mic, that went out.
All right, um, if you are going to allow, you can allow delivery, but that doesn't, if you don't allow a dispensary, that means the origination of that delivery is gonna be from somewhere outside of Brisbane.
So maybe we need to look at what language could, uh, make that, um, that the dispensary could not have walk-up clientele somehow? If we were to allow dispensaries in our industrial area or in wherever, how we could make sure that there wasn't, if that's a concern of the council, walk-up clientele, that way we could benefit from the sales tax.
Well, I think we explore the options and, you know, not making decisions now.
No, no, I'm just asking about...
So this has to come back to us then, so we, you got more clear direction on, uh, medical marijuana, but it's still a little murky or rose-colored glasses on the personal.
So are you looking for us to make any motion on the ordinance as to medical marijuana?
No.
Not, no, okay. Okay. All right, so let's move on to item...
Item B.
B, which is related, "Receive update on new law California Prop 64, the California Marijuana Legalization Initiative."
That was covered as part of our last item, so...
Okay, oh, good, okay.
Now, that, that's not a public hearing on its own, right? It's, 'cause, yeah, it was kinda weird, all right.
Yeah, it seems like it was under public hearing. Okay, so it's, um, 9/26, um, what's the council's pleasure, should we keep going or take a break? We have, um, the RV park item, which is, um, presentation, do you wanna hear, hear that first and then...
Yeah, I'm okay with hearing it, if somebody wants a break.
Yeah, you know what, I, I could use a break.
I, I think if we really stick to a five-minute break, we can...
Okay, we'll take a quick five-minute break, thank you.